I'm kidding. My troubles lightened a little. No promises forever.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the September 5th, 2018 meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission, which I'll call to order at this time. We have a quorum present. First item on tonight's agenda is to approve the minutes of the July 18th and the August 1st, 2018 Planning Commission meetings. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, I'll declare them approved as submitted. Before we get into our public hearings, I have one special thing to move to the next item, and that is a late submittal for the Vanderbilt Monroe Carroll Children's Clinic here in Murfreesboro. Ms. Ives, would you take that for us, please?
Thank you, Chairman, and good evening, Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. We, as you well know, have a contract pending to sell some land to Vanderbilt for the children's clinic here in Murfreesboro. During the course of preparing the surveys, which led to preparing the course of site plans and the plat, it was discovered that an adjoining landowner has a fence that encroaches into the property that's owned by the city. The encroachment is 14 feet at the north end and about two feet at the south end of that fence. The encroachment, of course, gives Vanderbilt a title problem with respect to that part of the property. It's a total of about 2,400 square feet out of some 13 and 1/2 acres that will be sold to Vanderbilt. What we have discussed with Vanderbilt today is to adjust the property line for our sale to Vanderbilt to follow the fence line as opposed to what we believe is the true property line. So if you look at the overhead in front of you, the picture before you, there is a rather dark line. I'll follow it. I'll show it here in my pen. That is what we believe to be the property line of the, between our property and our adjoining property owner. There is a, it's fairly light in this, but there's a light yellow shaded area between that property line and this red line that has an X, has some X's on. That red line is the fence line. So by moving the boundary of what we're selling to Vanderbilt to the fence line, we eliminate the encroachment, we eliminate the title issue, and we can go ahead and close. The problem is that Vanderbilt was already reasonably close to, within like 15 to 20 feet of the property line. By moving the property line into their property a few feet necessitates an adjustment to their site plan. Does not change the building plan. As you can see from the, I think they're dark green outlines on the, what's before you, they need to slide the lower part of their entrance driveway to the west a few feet. That will cause them to lose two parking places at the very front, and then one more parking place at the side. They're replacing those three parking places with addition, adding three parking places at the back here where I'm pointing to on the overhead. We believe this is a minor change, and maybe in an ordinary circumstance, we would simply administratively make this approval, being that we're in a gateway and that it certainly is a public project, something that the community is interested in. We wanted to bring it to your attention tonight. We are asking Planning Commission to approve this change to the site plan. We're, will discuss with council tomorrow night the slight change to the property lines for the property that we'll be selling. Then, assuming council, assuming that this commission and council approves these two changes, as soon as a survey can be revised with the, and the legal description be revised, we can go ahead and close with Vanderbilt. They're anxious to close simply so they can get started on their grading permit before the, what's normally a wet winter time sets in. So if any questions, be happy to try to answer them.
The new drawing looks to have adequate room for the two outbound lanes, the right turn only, left turn only, and then the inbound lane. So all that's still in place?
It will be, of course. What you're seeing is a sketch done by the, I guess this would be their site engineer, and it will be a condition of your approval, and Donald has prepared four or five of them that are on the front page of the handout. And one of those conditions is that there be a formal, fully engineered site plan resubmitted to make sure that we do retain the adequate lane width and turning lanes.
Okay. Then the three parking places. Any other questions from the Planning Commission?
If there are none, I move for approval as submitted.
All in favor indicate the saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. We'll move on to the public hearings portion of our agenda. First public hearing is the Annexation Plan of Services and Annexation Petition for approximately 39.94 acres located along Manson Pike, Kathleen Lowe, and Konstantin Evan DuVilles is the developer. Ms. Green, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman and Planning Commission members. Our first public hearing this evening is for you to consider an annexation petition made by the property owner of three parcels that are located along Manson Court and Manson Pike. These properties are owned by Kathleen Lowe, Pamela Flynn, and Konstantin DuVilles, and we have received a petition from them requesting the annexation. They do have a contract on their property to sell it and to Crescent Homes, and so Crescent Homes has also made an application for zoning change, which will be considered in the next public hearing, but not in this public hearing. This public hearing is to consider the annexation and the plan of services that staff's prepared for you. This property is probably familiar to you because in November and December of last year, the Planning Commission City Council studied this area. At that time, a 10-foot strip was left along the northern property line to not create what we sometimes call an island or donut within city limits. Since that time, I think we've had a change of opinion whether we can close that gap, and we believe we can now. So the difference in this plan of services is that that 10-foot gap is gone. The property did go to City Council. The annexation was held up at City Council based on the recommendation of our Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue Department. They wanted the annexation to, to not go through until the houses on the property were removed because they couldn't provide adequate fire service. So they said either make modifications to the property so that they can, or to wait until the houses were removed. So the folks who were looking to purchase this property were going to remove the houses. Since that time, the developers who have contract on this property wanted to make some changes to the previously reviewed and approved Plan Development Program book, and again, we'll go to that next. And so that's why it's coming back before you, because they wanted to change that PRD. So staff recommended, since we were going ahead to do that, to go ahead and close that gap between this property and Shelton, which, Shelton Springs, which is to the north. So you do have a plan of services. It outlines what services we can provide and gives a timeframe for which we can provide them. We can provide most services immediately upon effective date of annexation. Many of those will be provided to the property as development happens at the cost of the developer. Sewers coming from the north, it is not readily available, but there is a plan to extend it down to this property. So I know that that was discussed at some point. And of course, fire service can't serve the houses right now, but with this condition, and if you prove it according to the plan of services as written, we can hold up the annexation when it gets to council until they can meet the parameters that the Fire and Rescue Department have laid out. You should conduct a public hearing prior to making a recommendation to City Council. If you have questions about this annexation petition or the plan of services, I'll be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Green? Thank you. Before the public hearing, let me briefly go over the rules that we conduct our public hearings by. We'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to speak either for or against the proposal, please come to the podium. When you come up, please state your name clearly and give your address for the record. Keep your comments to no more than three minutes, and make all your questions to the Planning Commission. If you do have questions, the staff will make notes of your questions, and we'll try to get those answered at the conclusion of the public hearing. All that being said, I'll open the public hearing at this time, asking anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Now, this is on the Plan of Services and Annexation Petition. Nobody? Okay, now close the public hearing. Questions from the Planning Commission?
There are none. I'll make a motion we approve. Subject to all staff comments?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. The next item is a zoning application for approximately 39.9 acres located along Manson Court to PUD, simultaneous of the annexation Shelton Grove, previously referred to as Hardeman Grove. Crescent Homes is the developer. Ms. Green?
Thank you. This next public hearing is a companion zoning change request with the previous annexation public hearing, as I mentioned to you. The items were considered in November, December of last year by Planning Commission City Council. At that time, you've reviewed a plan for the 39 acres to be developed with all single-family detached homes. Since that time, they have modified, or their desires have changed for development of this property, and they would like to include a portion of the property to be developed with single-family attached. Single-family attached is another term for townhomes. So they're proposing to have some townhomes at the southern portion of the property, and then have the single-family attached to the north. The property, of course, does consist of three parcels, the parcels of which you considered annexation previously, and also there's a portion of right-of-way. It's a little less than five acres, and you can see that right-of-way in the blue area. They have made an application requesting the city to consider abandoning some of that right-of-way. We will consider that next month. You've scheduled that public hearing already. This public hearing does not, does not affect the outcome of that right-of-way or not, but if it is annexed, it'll be included, if it is abandoned, it'll be included in their development plans, and if not, it will be left out of the development plans. And essentially, what is on the southern part where these properties are, are some commercial out parcels, just two of them. The, the single-family detached product or house consists of three different lot sizes, with the largest lot sizes being those that back up to Shelton Square. And then there are now the addition of the single-family attached for the townhomes, and those townhomes are alley-loaded, and they are, have a minimum size of 1,000 square feet, with the lots being 2,600 square feet. And garages are in the rear, and they are optional, but they will be providing parking for four cars on every lot of the townhomes, and I think that's important for you to know because I know that's a concern for you. Also, staff was concerned with the ability of providing additional parking for guests because we're aware of that concern from the Planning Commission. So at staff's recommendation, they redesigned the plan so that those, the rights-of-way that are along the front of the townhomes actually have on-street parking on one side of the road, and it's actually designed on-street parking with the bulbs that protect it. And so I think that is a better plan than doing some of the remote parking lots that we see sometimes because it spreads the parking equally and is available. There, of course, is still the commercial portion of the PUD, which is outlined in your program book, which you should have had laid out before you. The future land use map does recommend that this property develop as a business park, and so of course, that's not consistent with the business park. The commercial development would be, there are some, across the interstate, further down Manson Pike, there is another area where you did approve a change to the land use plan from business park to townhomes, and so I wanted to make you aware of that. As I mentioned, I included the program book with you for review. At this time, I'm going to invite Rob Mulchon to the lecturn to give you a brief presentation. I know he's got several slides, please can go through them pretty quickly, and provide the details of the plan. If you have questions about them, you can either ask me or Mr. Mulchon. You should conduct a public hearing prior to making your recommendation.
Thank you, Margrean. Good evening, Chairman Lamb, members of Planning Commission, Rob Mulchon of the SCC, here tonight on behalf of Crescent Homes to give you a brief overview of Shelton Grove. As Margrean alluded to, we did bring this plan through last year. We're back with an amendment to it to incorporate a new housing element, more or less an attached product, which is a townhome product, and we'll talk about that here in just a moment. As we talked about in regards to the site itself, as you can see in this recent area photo, this is how the property is today. It's pretty much agricultural property with a couple homes on it, and it is located just the north of Manson Pike. And to the north, you can see the large farming area up there. That's actually Shelton Square, the PRD that was approved a year or so ago on that side, so we'll be connecting to that as part of the, part of the project. As we talked about in regards to existing conditions and rezonings, you can see the different zoning classifications. Shelton Grove, Shelton Square to the north is a massive PRD. And then you've got a couple of commercial properties that are actually on around the intersections of Blackman and Manson. Those are actually zoning classifications within the county itself. And of course, the park area to the west of that area as well, that you guys recently approved on that side. As Margrean talked about, this is, was, from the land use plan standpoint, proposed to be a business park type. We talked about this the last time we brought this project through. We don't, we were trying to understand the classification for a business park area out in this portion of the city, city itself on that side, with limited access to the interstate and other roadways like that. So we felt that this property, as well as some other properties that you guys have seen and changed in this corridor from this business park atmosphere to a residential component, that this is a better use of the property in regards to this pud that incorporates not only residential, as you can see to the north in the orange. This would also be a residential component along with commercial that we talked about in regards to the zoning for the existing zoning around the intersection there itself. Just a few slides real quickly to kind of go through. This is, this is the actual Manson roadway itself that goes back along the front of the property. You can see up on the right-hand side is Manson Pike, the over, the flyover of the interstate itself. This is a picture of the site, agricultural property. This is the intersection itself. This will be roughly where our main entrance will be coming onto Manson Pike at Manson Court intersection, so you can kind of see the topography and the change in the roadway structure itself. This is the Sitco Station at the corner of Blackman and Manson Pike. Just kind of give you a little character context, and a couple more of the pictures in the area around itself and the intersection. And off to the upper right-hand side of that picture is the area which was, was recently approved for the park itself, and some of the homes along Blackman Road. The existing pud that we brought through last year had 160 single-family detached homes on it, so that's what, you know, was the original plan on this with two commercial lots along Manson Pike, you can see in the lower portion of the image there. The proposed plan they're bringing to you tonight is the same, is more or less keeping with the same motif in the northern portion of the property in regards to single-family detached product, and the lower portion is the newer portion of the plan where you can see the townhomes themselves in regards to incorporating that back towards the commercial development along Manson Pike on that side. So, looking at that side. So with the plan itself, we're increasing this by 53 units up to 213 single-family lots, either attached and detached on that side. We're looking at 95 single-family detached lots, as you can see indicated in the green shades of the lots themselves, and 118 single-family attached townhome lots, which you can see in the gray along itself, and all be part of a residential HOA. Single-family detached lots, you can see there, you can see the different classifications. There's 41-foot wide, 50-foot wide, and 70, 67-foot wide lots. You can see with the color coding on the lots themselves. These all have 35-foot front-entry garages with a 15-foot allowable frontage of the house to protrude out past the garage, the more or less recessed garage to make this more architecturally character, of a better character, streetscape character along the roadway itself. Five foot in the sides between structures, and along, along the corners will also incorporate the 15-foot along the sides of the homes themselves. You can see some of the architectural character of the homes themselves. We talked about these will be one- and two-story homes, minimum 1,500 square feet. That's about 100 square feet less than what we had proposed the last time through with this project. Will all be two bedrooms or greater. Talked about two-car decorative garage doors on the front of these. Again, with the protrusion of the main body of the house actually sticking out past the garages to more or less make those recessed elements in regards to the garages themselves. We're looking at front elevations, we have brick, stone, and cement board. The remainder of the property, remainder of the homes will be a cement fiber board or some combination of brick or stone. Vinyl will only be printed in the trim and soffit areas, and all the homes will have a covered front porch or stoop incorporated to help along with that streetscape feel. A couple more pictures of what some of the homes' characters look like on that side. Now we'll get on to the new component of the project, the single-family attached slots of the townhomes. You can see here in the southern portion of the property that comes in right past the commercial lots off of Manson Pike. This is a diagram showing kind of how the layout of the footprints of the homes will work. As Margrean talked about, we were providing off the private alleyways, parking for four off-street spaces. So as you can see here, the different kinds of configurations, garages are not, garages aren't optional elements, so we want to make certain that you at least see all the different options. You can see where there is actually a one-car garage, a two-car garage, or no garage at all, but there's four parking spaces off-street to provide for the residents themselves on that side. And to kind of give you a little character about how the courtyards are, with the trash can locations behind the garages are up in that courtyard space and not along the alleyways when stored, when trash is not being picked up. And again, to give you a sense and feel of the, how the homes are brought up to the streetscape along the front side. Those will have a 10-foot front setback. Again, two stories, the minimum 1,000 square feet. Here you can see an image of some of the homes, the townhomes of Crescent's built that they're planning to bring to this project on this side. Again, building materials will be brick, stone, and cement, tape, and fiber board on the front side. Again, the vinyl will only be printed in trim and soffit areas. Again, covered porches and stoops. This is a little diagram that's included in your booklet. This is one of the things the design team wanted to bring forth with this project. As we talked about the last time we came through, there's special focus lots. As you can read through your pattern book, there are three different classifications for different elements that they took into account in regards to the architectural character of the homes, in regards to corner lots or multiple frontages, you know, giving extra character, making certain that the corner lots, the architecture is addressed on all corners, on all sides that face the street. Homes that are in terminating vistas or views of existing streets are the streets themselves, so that you have a better streetscape presence at the end of a street in regards to that. And homes that'll be funding onto parks and open spaces kind of give them, help, give a little extra character to the open space itself. Just give you a couple perspectives of how the neighborhood would look in regards to the streetscape. As you can see, trees along the street themselves and the character of the homes, you know, the view itself looking from the park. And this is the image of what the townhomes would look like when you're standing at the park looking across the street with the townhomes. Amenities, the main amenity itself is the central green. In this location here, you'll have a large green space for outdoor recreation and play, but also a playground for people to enjoy and bring the kids out and have a good conversation with your neighbor on that side. And also incorporating pedestrian scales, decorative street lighting along the streets to help illuminate all the sidewalks. We will have sidewalks on both sides of all streets. To the commercial lots along Manson Pike, I mean, the last time we came through, we had these two lots, and we're re-incorporating them this time along this side. We don't have any end-users currently, but we do have a list of allowable uses in your pattern book that are based off the CF zoning classification, and maximum building heights will be 35 feet in height. You can see here, talking about front setbacks off of Manson Pike, will be 30-foot, side setbacks will be 10 and 20-foot in the rears. Building materials, mainly machinery products across the board on this, you know, with some split-faced block using textured metals as secondary elements on that side. And along the periphery between the residential and the commercial, we're incorporating a Type C buffer with a six-foot tall PVC fence to help keep that, any headlight action that's going on in the parking lots from streaming over that boundary between the two developments, between the townhomes and the commercial lots themselves. Access, initially, we'll have our initial access off of Manson Pike with our main entrance there. You can see kind of a little character sketch of what that's going to be in regards to landscaping, the signage itself on the corner. And then eventually, as ourselves, eventually Phase 2 gets up to the north, then the eventual tie-in to Shelton Square to the north on that side will provide us with additional access back to Blackman Road, but also additional access through Shelton Square back out to Florence Road on that side as well. So we'll have a good, a good amount of movability between the developments on that side. And our third, and the last location for connectivity will be to the remaining triangular piece of property that's between the interstate, our property, and Shelton Square over on that side will be provided an access way to get to the property in the future on that side. Appreciate your time and consideration of this plan, and I'm available for any questions now or at the end of the public hearing. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Mulchon from the Planning Commission? Rob, on your access road coming in there, I didn't see anything showing in detail. I presume, we'll see that later, but I presume you're planning a right turn only, left turn only, and then an entrance?
Yes, coming out with, with this many homes coming out on Manson, we'll have that dedicated, two lanes out, one lane in dedication on that side. So if we do have a boulevard or a median kind of break in there, the two lanes going out will be on one side, and the inbound will be on the other side.
Any other questions?
Rob, and I may have misunderstood, but did you say that some of the townhomes do not have garages?
The garages are optional on this plan. We wanted to make certain, one of that diagram that you see on the page there, the garages are an optional character, so it's a choice by the, by the buyer of the townhome if they want to incorporate a garage. So initially, when they build the buildings themselves, the garages won't be there, but if the buyer wants to add a garage, they'll build a garage onto that piece of the property. They can do it as a two-car garage, or they can have it as a one-car garage option, or no garages at all, and just be four, you know, four surface parking spaces at the back of the, back of the lot along the private alleyways.
Okay. Any other questions?
And so, Mr. Mulchon, is like, the minimum width on those driveways for the townhomes is 16 feet? And is that wide enough? You know, I don't know.
16-foot is about as minimum as you want it to be. That gives you eight-foot, more or less, between vehicles. A typical parking space in the parking lot's nine-foot wide, so that would be, you know, a foot less when you're stacking two side by side, so you're down to 16-foot instead of 18-foot in regards to that side. But 16-foot's the minimum. They could build it out to 18-foot if they wanted to on that side, but that we just listed the bare minimum in regards to what you can feasibly get a vehicle to park back there. The idea with that, too, is in order to incorporate a grass strip between each of the parking areas, so there's a delineation between each of the townhomes that you have a grass strip that delineates your parking area from your neighbor's parking area on the other side.
Because they're each just 20 feet wide, right?
Correct.
And the buildings, most of the buildings have six units per building, as opposed, and a couple, it looks like a few of them have five, three of them have five?
Yes, ma'am.
And then the pictures that we're looking at in the book, like on page 15, those buildings are four units for each building. Look like, you know, three windows across versus, it's probably, the footprint is probably the same except it's six units, and more like what we're looking at on page 18 with just two windows across on each unit.
Those images there, you're looking at in the bottom left-hand on page 18, the bottom left-hand, you're looking at a five or six-unit complex in that bottom left-hand image there. The picture on the top is actually just showing three of the, of the townhomes in that run, so there could be at least five to six. They typically like to build in that five to six category, gives a good massing scale along the streetscape on that side, so that's what they wanted to incorporate with this. I think the other design challenge with this was the fact that we were building these along a curved roadway, so in order to get those to actually kind of stagger out appropriately along the streetscape, you kind of have to get them in those five or six-unit segments as well, so that you can kind of get that massing effect along that curvature of that roadway.
So then, do you think the image on page 15 is a true image of what this is going to look like or not?
Yeah, that's kind of the character image of what this is going to look like. The units themselves, actually, you're probably going to be a little, you know, you probably add a couple extra units on to each one of those units there, but that was their, that was the graphic representation.
They'll be smaller, each one, than those units are.
Yes.
Well, that was... Well, that was just, I know we still got to have the public hearing, but that's my concern, too, is all these garages, no garages, basically, unless someone just asks for one. And how they'll have trash pickup, you know, on the day that all the trash, it's going to be individual trashcans, they're going to sit those in their driveways for pickup, I take it?
Are they supposed to be in a driveway or in the street?
They'll be in the driveway, they'll be in the alleyway behind the homes on that side.
Okay.
Any other questions?
From a trash pickup standpoint, they've got enough room to be able to maneuver their trucks?
Yes, the alleyways themselves are designed city minimum standards, if not greater, if I can remember off the top of my head, so they're designed to city standards in regards to those alleyways.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Rob.
You're welcome.
In that case, I'll open the public hearing, asking anybody to come forward that would like to speak. Nobody? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. If there's no further questions from the Planning Commission, we're ready for a motion.
I got one more.
Yes, sir.
And again, I may have misunderstood what was said, but I'm assuming that the side setbacks would be applicable, meaning five feet on each side, with respects to the garages?
Are you talking about the?
Yeah, that's right. Five foot on the interior lots?
Yes.
It's fifteen feet on the corner, that's right.
Okay.
They couldn't go any closer, they couldn't ask for less, because our building codes would not allow that.
Right, okay.
So is staff comfortable? I mean, are twenty-foot-wide lots, is that reasonable with this footprint and these buildings? I mean, and trash pickup, and driveways, and parking, and?
I mean, twenty foot is narrow. We have done eighteen in some places, so it's certainly narrow. The, the, we have accepted in the past sixteen feet wide for two-car park, parking, or driveways. It was, I thought that they were, eight and a half is the smallest we do in the city, so I'd asked about that in the past, but our engineering department said that when there's no, that that sixteen feet was, they were comfortable with it, although you can certainly request it to be something more if you think that's more appropriate. So part of, I think, the concern is that you have the alley, which will be heavy-duty asphalt, and then you have the concrete drives, and so it'll be just solid pavement in the back, and so they're basically trying to figure out a way to leave four feet of grass between them, which isn't a lot, probably, where they need to put the garbage carts. In the past, with this many townhomes, we would have required a dumpster, but we've changed our solid waste policy, so now it's up to our solid waste director, if you guys are okay with it, to, to serve this. You can, of course, require a dumpster if you want in this plan, and you can say that carts don't make sense for the townhomes. I think it certainly makes sense for the single-family detached. And they could commit to building a certain percentage of garages. I know right now, their proposal is that the commitment is building no garages, but having them being optional. But if you felt like there needed to be some amount of garages constructed there, they could come up with a percentage. That's something we've done in the past. They have, we haven't discussed that, of course, but if you wanted to see that, that's an option as well as, because it's a plan development. With these plan developments, we can be more specific in those guidelines, and you could either recommend something, or Crescent can come back with something if that, if that's a concern for you.
I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but I keep hearing four-feet grass area, but five-feet setback. So are we saying that the grass area between the driveways are four feet?
Because if the driveway was sixteen feet wide?
Right.
And the lot is twenty feet total?
So how, so if the garage is, so were you saying that?
No, the five-foot, the five-foot is from, is from the main, the garages themselves can be abutted across the spectrum, so when you look at it from the standpoint of the actual building units themselves, it's five foot from the actual home itself to the next, you know, to the property.
You're saying the garages can be connected?
The garages can be connected on that side. It's a, it's a typical garage kind of situation in a townhome development.
I don't know how, you mentioned that the homes will be built first, and then after they were built, you come back and build the garage. How do you do that with attached garages?
The garages are attached themselves.
They're not attached.
They're not attached to the actual structures. There's a courtyard between, between the buildings and the garages themselves. There's not a breezeway and then connecting the actual living structure to the garage structure.
Any other questions? If there are none, we're ready for a motion. I'll make the motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item C is a zoning application for approximately thirty-three point three acres located along West Thompson Lane to amend the PRD for General's Landing. Blue Sky Construction is applicant, Ms. Ely.
Thank you.
Ms. Green.
We've known each other a long time, haven't we?
This third public hearing is for you to consider an amendment to an existing plan development. Located north of West Thompson Lane, there's a property that you zoned PRD several years ago, back in two thousand sixteen, to be developed as the General's Landing PRD, and Blue Sky Construction is the developer of that property. At the time, of course, you approved a zoning plan which allowed the development of a hundred and thirty, single-family attached lots, and thirty-one, single-family detached lots, for a total of a hundred and sixty-one units. This change is specifically related to how the solid waste will be managed and the mail service. In the program book that was approved by both Planning Commission and City Council, they specified that the single-family attached, oh, so the townhomes would use a dumpster, because that was our policy then. I mentioned before that we've changed that now, so carts can be an option, but because the program book was specific about that solid waste and how it would be managed by a dumpster, according to our standards, they can't change that without going through the legislative process, so they're coming back to you, and they're requesting to not have, not to do the dumpster anymore, but to receive city services. I did get confirmation from our solid waste director that, from the plans, he saw that he could service the property if that were the wishes of the Planning Commission and City Council, so he has that ability. The plan that you have before you has three pages, which would just be supplemental to the book that we have that was approved in two thousand and sixteen, and it shows the area that was previously proposed to be used as the dumpster to be a recycling area. Staff was, and is concerned with any possible abuse of that, because I don't want people leaving, you know, furniture who don't live there outside of the gates, or using it for their own personal recycling. And so the developer is very adamant that this is a service they want to be able to provide to the residents, so they've designed it so that it is screened from West Thompson Lane, so that it would be less appealing to come in and misuse or abuse that area. Also, adjacent to the enclosure for the proposed recycle center is a kiosk. The United States Postal Service has had a change in policy, so that plans you'll see from here on out, single-family detached, detached, will all start to utilize mail kiosks. No longer are we, or is the, the postal office going to permit individual mailboxes in new developments? So that's a change for us here in Tennessee, and we're, we're used to something different, but that is how it is, and so I asked for them to redesign the plan to accommodate that, because they've also already gotten feedback from the postmaster that they cannot have the carts as previously anticipated. So I wanted them to design something, since they're already coming back to you. Adjacent to the enclosure is a covered kiosk to serve the single-family attached and the single-family detached portion of this residential development. And I, I've provided those pages, which are proposing to change in your program book, or in your, in your packet, and I think Mr. Clyde Roundtree is here. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Roundtree? He's going to come to lecturn. It's, the change is not a big change, but it does require your action, so if you'd like to provide some additional information, after which you should hold a public hearing before making your recommendation.
Mr. Roundtree.
Thank you, Margaret Ann. Chairman Lamb, Commissioners, my name's Clyde Roundtree, Hubbleson Steel Engineering. And really, Mr. Burns just wanted me to read the reason why we want to do this. Primarily, across the street in this development, there's single-family lots that were against the North Borough Court neighborhood, and that was really a concession we made in the development to make sure that North Borough is buffered from, you know, the townhome developments. And in that process, Mr. Burns came aware just that one side of the street will have standard trash container pickup, the other side will be, you know, be a dumpster-type of pickup. And so he thought just to stay consistent with this, the character of how trash is received through the neighborhood, that to have the single, you know, the roll-in type of garbage units was something he desired, so there wouldn't be confusion within the neighborhood. He feels like it'll be a little cleaner look as well. As far as the recycle center is concerned, that's just something he feels like could be more innovative, to allow residents to have a place where they can recycle. And so as Margaret Ann mentioned, it's part of a, like, one big kind of unit, the recycle center, as well as the kiosk are attached. And as Margaret Ann mentioned also, the kiosks are now being required by the federal government for us for mail service. So if you have any questions specifically to it, I'm glad to do my best to answer those things, but once you don't understand the catalyst for why Mr. Burns requested that. Thank you.
Any questions?
I have a question about the USPS change. Does that come with any specific requirements for parking?
No.
It does not?
It does not. They can leave it up, they leave it up to the communities, regardless of what communities think, though, this is how service will be provided.
Right.
So as staff, we've talked about it, and we think that we are going to come up with some policies and procedures. I think Mr. Anthony is working on those, and we think that they might look different in a single-family residential subdivision, maybe put those every, we want them to be walkable, so maybe every eight houses in on secondary streets, not on main streets. And then maybe on higher dense developments, we would want to see a pull-off with parking, because we wouldn't want to see that, that effect on the public right-of-way. But I think the idea was that if there were enough of them, and they were scattered in the larger lot subdivisions, they probably wouldn't have as big of an impact. Our city manager is from out west, and he had us look at places he used to live, and they've been doing this for quite some time, and he said that in his experience in those single-family detached neighborhoods, with those on the secondary street, there wasn't a lot of negative effects from that. But I think we're going to kind of feel our way through it, and if you guys have guidance, then we, we want to incorporate whatever you have within our policies and procedures.
And Scarlett, with that in mind, too, just because they're, by combining the two, we were able to get a little bit of a service area, so we provided two parking spaces, but also ample room for a truck to back in and back out and all. So I think there's going to be quite a bit of space associated with those in the future, just for some of the serviceability of the, the units themselves.
Any other questions? Thank you, Clyde. In that case, I'll open the public hearing, asking anybody to come forward that would like to speak. Nobody? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Any other questions from the Planning Commission? Now we're ready for a motion.
I'll move to approve subject to all staff comments.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item is a mandatory referral, right-of-way abandonment to consider, excuse me, to consider the abandonment of a portion of Florence Road right-of-way. Chris Bratcher is the applicant. Mr. Blomley, good afternoon, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Lamb and members of the Planning Commission. Our next public hearing tonight is with regards to a right-of-way abandonment along Florence Road, and there's a little bit of history behind this, and it's kind of a multi-pronged, but I'll try not to bore you for too long with all the details. There are three components. See that the curved area following the current right-of-way of Florence Road, that's what we have deemed to be excess right-of-way along the current alignment of Florence Road. And then, you see at the east end of the parcel, just south of the railroad tracks, there is the old alignment of Florence Road, which was never formally abandoned, south of the railroad tracks. And then cutting across the parcel is the old right-of-way of Alexandria Drive. Alexandria Drive was, of course, realigned when Florence Road was realigned as well. So really, this is kind of to, to not only abandon some, what we have deemed excess right-of-way along the current alignment of Florence Road, but to clean up some unneeded old rights-of-way left over from how Florence Road previously was aligned. Mr. Chris Bratcher purchased the property that is adjacent to this right-of-way that's proposed to be abandoned, purchased it from the city last year, I believe. It is a long, not-too-deep parcel. It's kind of shallow, doesn't have a lot of depth for development, so Mr. Bratcher is trying to do what he can to, to make the, the parcel more developable, more, to have greater depth, to, to get all of the, all of the elements of a properly-designed site in. We have surveyed the various departments and city utilities and sought feedback on this right-of-way abandonment request. A couple of things to note, AT&amp;T may have lines that need a utility easement within the right-of-way that's proposed to be abandoned, and our sewer department, the Murfreesboro Water Resources Department, does have a sanitary sewer line in the area proposed to be abandoned, and they would just request that a sanitary sewer easement be retained for that easement. One thing that I will note is that a portion of the right-of-way that we're proposing to abandon is not actually city right-of-way as yet. You'll see the city limits line on this, on this second exhibit that I've, that I've included in the agenda package. What we're doing, we're going ahead and including all the right-of-way that, that we feel needs to be abandoned, whether it's in our jurisdiction or not, because we feel that before too long, this, the right-of-way that's not in the city limits will be in the city limits, and this will allow us, once we annex that right-of-way, to be able to abandon it without having to go back through this process all over again. So we would request that the, after holding a public hearing, that the Planning Commission consider abandoning all of the right-of-way that's on the exhibit, whether it's in the city or in the county right now. So if the Planning Commission decides to recommend approval of this request to the City Council, we would recommend the following four conditions. The applicant shall be required to submit the necessary documents to the legal department required to draft the quitclaim deed. The applicant shall be responsible for recording the quitclaim deed. The abandoned right-of-way shall be incorporated into the existing parcel via a subdivision plat recorded at the Register of Deeds office. And utility easements shall be recorded to accommodate existing utilities, including but not limited to sanitary sewer and possibly AT&amp;T. The Planning Commission, as I mentioned, will need to conduct a public hearing and then formulate a recommendation to the City Council. Mr. Randy Caldwell is here, if you have any questions for him. He is representing Mr. Chris Bratcher, who is the applicant on the request.
Okay. Any questions from the Planning Commission? Now I'll open the public hearing, asking anybody to come forward that would like to Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. There's no further questions from the Planning Commission, we're ready for a motion.
Matthews, is there any reason we didn't just go ahead and annex the area and then turn around and release it?
Yeah, I think, I think that'll be coming soon. Mr. Bratcher, let me see if I can get the, I'm going to borrow your microphone.
Don't spit on it.
This triangle here, if you follow the cursor going back up here, is property that Mr. Bratcher has already been in contact with Rutherford County. Rutherford County owns this property right here. There, there is a, an existing ditch separating this triangle from the balance of the county's property. Mr. Bratcher has already been in discussions with the county about purchasing that triangle, so, and he will be requesting the annexation of that triangle, at which time, we would go ahead and include the, the right-of-way that we've identified that's in the unincorporated county, and that we wouldn't have to go back through this, through this process.
I'm glad to know that I didn't know that. If there's no other questions or comments, I move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next item is a zoning application for approximately two-hundred-and-four acres, located south of John Bragg Highway, to be rezoned from RS-15 to RSA Type II, approximately twenty-six acres, RS-6, approximately one-hundred-and-forty acres, and RS-10, approximately thirty-eight acres. Larry Elliott is the applicant. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. Our next item is a rezoning request. This is property located just to the south of John Bragg Highway and just to the west of Double Springs Road. Property is currently zoned RS-15, was annexed about four or five years ago. There's, one thing of note is that there's not sewer capacity to serve development on this property, so any development on the property would have to be on a step system. And Mr. Elliott, the applicant, has been working with the Murfreesboro Water Resources Department on that for quite some time, and the Water Resources Department is aware of this request. Mr. Elliott's engineer has submitted a letter to staff. Mr. Elliott's engineer has submitted a letter to staff and to the Water Resources Department indicating the maximum number of dwelling units that can be constructed on the property. And that includes the property that he already has zoned RM-16, just to the north of the requested area. So, so there are built-in limitations on the number of units that can be constructed on this property regardless of the zoning that he is proposing. One thing to keep in mind also, any development on this property will have to make accommodations for the step fields. So there will be quite a bit of open space on the property associated with the step fields for the, the step system. Property, as I mentioned, is currently zoned RS-15. There are three components to the request. The area in purple is being requested to be rezoned RSA Type II. It's directly adjacent to the existing RM-16 zoning. The RSA Type II zone is the suburban, or excuse me, the single-family detached district suburban townhouse. It allows townhomes at a maximum density of 12 dwelling units per acre and requires a minimum of 75% brick, stone, or cementitious siding for each building facade. And there are minimum open space and formal open space requirements in the RSA Type II zone. The largest component of the request is a rezoning for about 140 acres to RS-6, which is single-family residential detached with minimum lot sizes of 6,000 square feet. Much like the RSA Type II zone, the RS-6 zone has minimum exterior material requirements of 75% brick, stone, or cementitious siding. And other materials can only be used as, as accent materials up to 25% per facade. Finally, around the eastern and southern borders of the subject property is requested RS-10 zoning, single-family residential with minimum lot sizes of 10,000 square feet. That zoning is, it's kind of a transition to the larger single-family residential lots along Double Springs Road, as well as the property to the south as well. There are two proposed improvements, or two planned improvements on our major transportation plan that will affect this property. And any development on this property would have to accommodate those two improvements. One is the Haven Drive extension. That is identified on the major transportation plan as midterm improvement number 18. And it would extend from South Rutherford Boulevard over to Double Springs Road. The plan would have to make accommodations for that planned improvement. Also midterm improvement number 19 is the Urbey Lane extension, which is a three-lane roadway from Manchester Pike all the way northeast to East Main Street. The surrounding land uses and zoning on the property, I mentioned the, the larger single-family residential lots in the county located to the east along Double Springs Road. There's existing RM-16 and CH zoning to the north of the subject property along John Bragg Highway. To the south of the subject property is a large tract located in the unincorporated county, but we've actually just received an annexation petition and a zoning request for it. And we anticipate bringing that before you at the middle of this month. To the southwest of the subject property are the Stone Gate and Crestview subdivisions, which are zoned RS-10. And also to the west of the subject property is the Aspen Heights apartment complex, which is zoned RM-12. The Murfreesboro 2035 comprehensive plan shows the subject property to be zoned as suburban residential, or to be used as suburban residential. The suburban residential zone is a land use classification of 2 to 3.54 dwelling units per acre. And recommended development types are detached residential dwellings and planned developments to provide other housing, but with increased open space to preserve a suburban character setting. It further states that development options can be established, which allow for smaller lot sizes in exchange for greater open space, with the additional open space devoted to maintaining the suburban character and buffering adjacent to properties and roads. It specifically identifies RS-15, 12, and 10 as zoning districts that are compatible with the suburban residential character. The request for RS-10 zoning, as I mentioned, is consistent with the, on its face with the recommendations of the 2035 plan. And both the RS-6 and RSA Type II zones, however, allow for a greater density than the suburban residential classification recommends. As mentioned above though, the suburban residential character in the comprehensive plan does make provisions for smaller single-family lots and single-family residential attached uses in conjunction with open space. Open space and formal open space are required by ordinance in any townhouse development in the RSA Type II zone. And in addition, step fields, which will likely be in the area designated as RS-6, will remain as open space. Because the rezoning request is not for a planned development though, it is unknown at this time how much open space the development in the proposed RS-6 and RSA Type II zones will contain. However, it should be noted that with the proposed density that the, that the design engineer outlined in his letter, once we factor out the number of units in the RM-16 zone, the density is very close to the, if not within the range of the suburban residential classification. And that's something that we see with developments that are on step systems. In general, the densities are much less than what they would be allowed under the, under development with sanitary sewer, just because of the amount of open space that's gobbled up with the, the step fields. Staff believes that arguments could be made for or against this request being consistent with the suburban residential classification. The planning commission will need to determine whether or not it views the request as consistent and whether or not it's an appropriate instance to deviate from the comprehensive plan. Planning commission will need to conduct a public hearing on this matter and then formulate a recommendation to city council. Mr. Clyde Roundtree is here, representing Mr. Larry Elliott, the developer. At this time Clyde or Mr. Elliott, do you have anything that you would like to add?
Thank you Matthew. Chairman Lamb, commissioners. My name is Clyde Roundtree, Huddleston Steel Engineering. Matthew just did a great job of summarizing the overall development that Mr. Elliott intends, and I am here representing Mr. Larry Elliott, the developer. As far as, as Matthew's describing, there's been some conceptual work on kind of how the plan would actually lay out. And I would venture to say there's probably 30 to 40% of the land that's going to be green space. And the, the conceptual plans I've seen so far really lend towards a lot of the backs of the homes actually abutting those green spaces as well. And it's all driven by the step system. And this particular area, in order to have a developable, you know, Mr. Elliott wanted to go down to a smaller lot size just to make it feasible for development. And currently the intention is to have more of your 6,000 square foot lots with a combination of a very minor portion of the property being used for senior living, which will be smaller homes, potentially one-bedroom and two-bedroom homes. So like Matthew said, there's no development plans currently, but the overall intention is to have single-family detached homes primarily, with a few senior living homes as well. And a large portion of the property is going to be committed towards green space due to the step system. If you have any more specific questions, I'll be glad to do my best to answer those.
Any questions, Mr. Roundtree? The step field will accommodate how many dwellings?
According to the letter that was done by Mr. Huddleston, it's really based on bedroom, you know, the bedroom amounts. And his report says that 1,578 bedrooms would be accommodated by the step systems provided. And that can correspond to 789 lots of two-bedroom homes or 526 lots of three-bedroom homes. And so I think currently, you know, we're looking at is probably about 160 single-family homes with another 100 senior adult living type of homes. So we'd be well under what the capacity of the step system would be based on current understanding.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Roundtree. If no questions, I'll open the public hearing this time, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Nobody? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions about the planning commission?
So can I ask, so this would be just one step system that would be used for all three of these different areas, is that correct?
Yes ma'am, I believe so.
And is the only, sorry, is the only access this coming over from South Rutherford Boulevard? Where's the other access to this property?
Well, I think the, the major access point will be that MTI number 19 that will, that would be constructed with Mr. Elliott's project up to John Bragg Highway. And that would actually, you know, once we see the property to the south, that will basically create a connection from Beale's Road up to John Bragg Highway, a three-lane roadway to connect those. So right now, the requested area, as you can see, is kind of landlocked, doesn't have any direct frontage. But, but I think that three-lane roadway north-south would, would provide that access up to John Bragg Highway. And also, trying to remember the name of that street that runs right in front of Aspen Heights Apartments. As you can see, the right-of-way is already platted to the property line. Not sure if that roadway is constructed yet or not, but it's platted. So I think we would see that potentially in the future, the, the Haven Drive extension and also the Urbey Lane extension going north and south.
Matthew, when we approved the 2035 plan, we referred to green space as more like open green space that kids could go out and play on and, and almost like park area. Well, we're using that as a step system. Are these step system areas, are they fenced in and enclosed so that no one could go onto that property? I mean, I'm having a hard time interpreting that as green space when it's not accessible to anybody from the neighborhood to go out and play a game of soccer or kickball or whatever.
Yeah, and when I, when I say open space, I am merely using it as a, as a tool to try to determine density. As far as whether or not it's usable open space, the, the step field probably has very little utility for, for actual recreational purposes. I think there is typically a fence around it and, and it would not be utilized by the neighborhood.
Any other questions?
But the, the, I did want to mention the RSA Type II zone does require actual usable open space and formal open space as well. That would not necessarily be a requirement of the RS-6 or the RS-10 zones, but the RSA Type II zone would, would require that.
Okay, if there's no other questions, we're ready for a motion.
Move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. And moving on to the final public hearing tonight is a zoning application for approximately 29.44 acres located along Buffalo River Drive to be rezoned from RS-12 to PRD, the Gardens at Three Rivers PRD, and to amend the existing Three Rivers PRD, Achiever Development is the applicant. Mr. Anthony, good evening.
Good evening everyone, good to see you. The applicant is requesting rezoning to PRD for two parcels located along the east side of Casey Lane. The staff report indicates the west side of Casey Lane, but I'll blame that on my scribe or I was looking at a map upside down. The property totals 29.44 acres, 22 and a half of which are currently part of the Three Rivers PRD. The new PRD would be called the Gardens at Three Rivers and would consist of 70 zero-lot line houses and 81 townhouses for an overall density of 5.13 dwelling units per acre. The Murfreesboro 2035 land use plan shows two land use designations for this property, one being auto-urban general residential and the other being suburban residential. The proposed densities within those land use designation boundaries are 5.64 dwelling units per acre and 3.46 dwelling units per acre respectively. Both are within the recommended density ranges for those land use designations. Adjacent zoning includes PRD on the west, RSA Type 1 on the north, RS-12 on the east, and RS-10 on the south. Rob Mulchan with SEC is here, representing the applicant and can talk more about this project. The planning commission should conduct a public hearing and then make a recommendation to the city council. Thank you.
Evening Chairman Lamb, members of the planning commission, Rob Mulchan, SEC. On behalf of Achiever Development, tonight to talk to you about the amendment to the Gardens at Three Rivers. I want to quickly pass out a, a little handout here in regards to the originally approved plan on this. We didn't incorporate it in the book, we're going to incorporate it in the book if this moves forward, so that there's a side-by-side comparison of the books, so you can at least see what the original plan was versus what the plan is we're bringing forth today. So let me pass that out. All right, there you go. I'm going to bring a teleprompter there. All right. As we all know, the original Three Rivers master plan was really conceived in the late 90s and approved in the early 2000s. On that side, you can see here the original master plan in regards to what we called a, where the area of gardens is right now, you can see there's the red area. This was about what we call section two or phase two of the overall master plan development from back in 2000. This area itself was comprised of a couple of different pieces that was broken apart over time. As you can see here, the original plan in regards to this 22 acres originally, in regards to this portion of the proposed plan, had 142 homes on it. So actually, you know, it was pretty densely packed at that point in time. There were 35-foot wide lots. They had no amenities, no open space was incorporated with this portion of the development on that side. So I kind of just give you a little background about where this project was before we came with the original plan that was approved a year or so ago on this side and where we're going with it potentially today on that side. Existing conditions, you can see we have two connections in regards to existing streets out of the Three Rivers off of Casey Lane. That's where our sewer and water connections will be on that side. And drainage is moving from the existing three, Casey Lane area to the east towards the creek that will be the new boundary between the proposed development and the River Downs development next door. As you can see here, the project itself in regards to the other subdivisions and zonings, you can see the large PRD portion of this project in regards to the Three Rivers and also Stone Bridge, but also the River Downs development next door, which is RS-12 and the River Downs development to the south on that side as well. Couple of existing images of the homes along Casey Lane that butt or back up to the alleyway, which we'll be sharing with in regards to this project. Give you a little character of the homes, and these are the existing homes in the alleyway in regards to the garages that are off the alleyway. This existing alleyway will be shared with our development as it was originally approved in the previous plan. Nothing along this edge has changed between the originally approved PRD that we're bringing and the new plan that we're bringing forth today. So it's pretty much cohesive with the original plan that we brought forth a year or so ago. There's some images of the actual character of the area itself in regards to the landscape. Current plan, which I just gave you there, as you can see, had 127 homes for about 5.6 dwelling units per acre, had 73 cottages and 54 villas, and it had about a little over three acres of open space. The proposed plan that we're bringing forth today, the main change to this is that we're actually utilizing the piece of land, as Donald talked about, a little over six acres of the River Downs subdivision. It was discussed when we originally brought this plan through about the, the difficulties of that sliver of land between what was our property and the River Downs property and the difficulties of actually somebody utilizing and developing that property. So our developer and the River Downs developer got together, had a conversation, and they felt that it was best to do a land swap and that the, our development would better be using that land for, for usable space to be used than River Downs development because it would be putting in a single-loaded roadway on that side, whereas we can better utilize this space for the incorporation into this development on that side. So with this plan, we've increased about 24 units or up to, or density actually comes down because of the amount of actual green space that we're incorporating with the new plan on that side. As I talked about, we had about three acres of open space incorporated in the last plan. And with the inclusion of this plan and the re-modification of the street network for our development, we're up to about a little over seven acres. So about four acres of increase of open space between the originally approved PRD for Three Rivers, Gardens of Three Rivers, and the proposed plan you can see itself. Talked about phasing in regards to that. Talked about phasing in regards to that. Phase 1, you can see in the green, phase 2 coming off of the remainder portion of the alleyway, and then phase 3 and phase 4 coming down towards the creekway. Kind of, we've talked about the two different product types, it's not showing up very well in this diagram, but the yellow lots themselves of the cottages, we'll talk a little about those right now, and the other areas we'll talk about are the villas themselves. These are one-story homes, these are more or less a 1,300 square foot, single-story home. It's actually rear-entry garages off the street, the actual front of the home is actually the garage, but also the, the front backside of the home is actually a front as well. So, this appearance right here, this is actually the fronts of the homes that will face the other homes themselves, so you have a, have a good little front, front door appearance. In regards to that, this actually fronts onto the green space between the, you know, different pairings of homes along different streets on that side. And this is what the garages and the, along the streetscape look like in regards to pulling in on that side. Everything here will be a mixture of brick, stone, or cement board, vinyl only printed in the trim and soffit areas on that, just as it was in the, in the previously approved PRD. Villas themselves are the blue, uh, blue, uh, blue areas and blue lots on this in regards to that, are more or less along the southern, eastern peripheries of the development, with a little bit moving back towards the amenity center that we'll talk about here in a little bit on that side. These are one and two-story homes on that side, these are a minimum of 1,400 square feet. These will have decorative garage doors, as you can see in these images itself, in regards to the character of the homes as we move through this. Again, mixture of brick, stone, cement board siding, vinyl only in the trim and soffit areas, and this is another character image of what these homes look like. The same character style of what we had originally approved and we got brought the PRD through the last time on that side. Amenities itself, we have a main amenity complex on this side, there'll be a little clubhouse, we'll have a outdoor garden area for outdoor gardening on that side. And we'll also be incorporating with the newer portion of this development, we'll be incorporating a trail system to go along with all the sidewalks in the development, so we're creating an extra level of walkability. This will be more of a nature trail kind of component there for getting off and walking along the creekway, but also just utilizing that extra green space that we're incorporating with the addition of the additional six-plus acres into the project itself. A little bit of some character, but we intend to look at the character of the, the amenities itself, the clubhouse, outdoor seating areas, grilling areas out behind the clubhouse for good places for gathering for these. Again, these are going to be age-targeted type of homes, so these are, you know, these are not age-restricted, but age-targeted, based on the type of floor plans in these, in these units we're incorporating, they're more geared towards a, you know, potentially a 55 and older type of person who would want to buy into these on this side. So, is more or less a targeted mix on that side. So, we're trying to create a little bit more of a, a community gathering space at the center of all this for, for the residents to come together and hang out and talk and converse on that side. Again, just talking about some of the little box gardens in regards to doing some personal gardening for the community. Access, we have two main access points initially off of the Casey Lane area on that side, and then we'll be looking at incorporating two additional stubs to the north. This property of the north has been recently changed over to RSA Type 1 zoning classification, so providing stubs for any future development that may be associated with that zoning classification to the north. We'll also be incorporating, this is one of the other things that comes along with the addition of this, is the crossing that creekway to get back over River Downs. As part of this, we will be changing the original Buffalo Trace roadway name that comes through our development in this location up to the roundabout in Casey Lane there, over to Autobahn. That's the actual roadway name that's over River Downs right now, so we'll be going through the process of amending that, street naming there to incorporate that connection back over River Downs and utilizing the Autobahn roadway name classification coming from that development on that side. Of course, we'll be using the 40 and 50-foot public cross-sections, these will be all the same cross-sections that, you know, using the city standards on that side. Landscaping throughout, we'll be incorporating, like I said, with over seven acres of open space, will be held to the city zoning ordinance in regards to the, how to define and lay out these open spaces as they come through each of the phases on that side, but also incorporating, you know, lush vegetation along the foundations, whether it be on the front or back, so these homes with the cottages, the villas, just to make sure we have a very good streetscape presence along the way, across the development itself. I appreciate your time and consideration of this amendment to the planned development, and I'm here for any comments and questions now or after the public hearing. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Roundtree at this time? Thank you, Clyde. No questions. I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
My name is Randy Goode, I live at 2531 Casey Lane. I think this is an awful lot of homes to be dumping out into that alley. You can barely handle the traffic we have there now, and if you go to the neighborhood, these alleys in this neighborhood, none of them, they don't have two homes dumping out into alley. If you go where there's been building on the other side of the alley, it's the front of the home. So, it's just one section now. That alley's only 20 feet wide, I've never measured it, but that's what they say it is, and I'm just concerned about the numbers there. Is there any way that if, that they could move the exit to the homes off of that alley?
You're asking me, and I don't know the answer to that, so...
Well, it's going to be, I think there's what, 30, going to be 39 homes on that alley?
Sounds about right.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four. All right, so, that's 34 more homes dumping into an alley that can barely handle what we got there now.
Okay, we'll, we'll let Mr. Mulchan talk about that. Anybody else?
My name's Andrew Trox, so I live 2535 Casey Lane, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Without reiterating what my neighbor here had to say, my one and only primary concern with this is from a public safety standpoint. Access to and from that neighborhood is limited as it is. Emergency traffic, whether it be city or county rescue or police coming through in that neighborhood, due to the way our traffic is set up in there anyway, they're restricted on what they can and can't do. I myself, I'm, I'm a state trooper, so if I have to respond to a call coming to or from my home, it, it takes a little while to get through that neighborhood. If we're talking about adding, what was it, 160-plus new homes in what the developer referred to as a age-targeted environment, the level of emergency response is going to have to increase. It will by nature increase due to the number of people. You, you know, you consolidate people, especially, no offense to anyone whatsoever in this room, but you consolidate people of a certain age bracket into a certain area, you're going to increase your need for emergency response. And given the nature that, I, I have four kids, some of the other neighbors have small kids, it is terrifying as a first responder to have to fly through these neighborhoods not knowing whether or not a child or someone like that is going to come up, pop up out from between a house. So, that's my concern, that's where I fall into it, especially from the aspect of what Randy was saying as far as that particular alleyway bordering, or as the boundary between our existing homes and the new proposal. You can't get two cars through there right now without risking hitting, hitting mirrors, let alone if somebody had to come through there with a fire truck and an ambulance and a police car. As we all know, that's the normal response, so that's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Morris Spence, I live at 2526 Casey Lane. I have only two, two points, one to address the issue before us, and then the second one is a supportive request to the council itself. Let's go to the fact, Mr. Chairman and committee members. The way the plan is set forth today with the additional six acres that have come about under development and the increased size uses of the units, we have, in addition to that, just been approved, Three Rivers at the front of the community, they've got about 150 or so townhomes going in there. The River Gate is under development, not completed, another 200, 300 units. Ryan Homes is in the process of completing out their portion of their space in our community, which is going to be an additional 210 homes. We have just come up with a, a approximate vision, envision of what y'all saw back in 1990 and 2000, from approximately 1,000 units to almost 2,000 units. The lineage that we put into the community cannot support those numbers, not support of traffic and everything else. Luckily, thanks to the city, we just got the final payment put in on Casey Lane proper. Now, Casey Lane is a divided, two-lane road, it's not like the other Casey Lane north of 99. That is a major access, you know, transit type of supportive condition for a larger community set. This, this set aside was never envisioned to hold the amount of, of site development that is currently being proposed. Now, if we complete out what we already have, I want to take up my three minutes here, if we complete out what we have, we have exceeded our density overall as a community. Now, if we look at the access to the proposal in and of itself, looks good. We have no problem, but then we lay that right in the middle of the planned community where it sits north and south of the traffic that has to get in and out of our community, you are introducing harm. The introduction of harm is not something that this planning commission should be considering. As a community resident, we're not against, I'm not against, high-density putting in the apartments, because we already have it in our community. We welcome that in our community, but what we're not welcoming is, in addition to what is reckless, one-on-one postage stamps approval versus the, looking at the overall community aspect, you're breaking our community apart by these postage stamps insertions of properties of higher density. What I recommend to the committee is to go back to the developer and say, okay, you want to put in 150 units, fine. Then the planning group needs to come in and say, for example, at Veterans Lane interests of Casey Lane South, there is no light, there is no turnoff except for using the medium turn, there's no signage for the turn. Up at the development that was hitting us now with the expansion of 99, there is no development to give us another right-turn lane there up by, as a reference of BQ, the Burger King that's right there. Ladies and gentlemen, I have to confess, I have visited the Burger King drive-thru trying to make a right turn onto our Casey Lane, because the way that it was planned and set aside, they put a little island, it was like, and you're coming down, you know, 99, right turn! It's not. Maggie works Tuesday through Friday, so she and I wait. Now, we've got an understanding, and what I'd like this planning board to consider is that, is this the wiser development issue, or should we dial this back and reconsider it at a later date? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
John Carter, 2725 Lockwood Court. My concern is a little bit different, I don't have a map to point this out, but along the Lockwood Court area which abuts to this property is wetlands there, and we already have a number of neighbors on the north side of Lockwood who have flooding in their backyard all the time. As they build out here, we're concerned that nobody's taking care for the amount of water that is pushed into this area from the construction that also will, where the wetlands are, where they push in that area. So, that's something we want to make sure there is taken care of as the planning committee considers all this.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Nobody? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Mulchan, I think I mistakenly called you Mr. Roundtree a while ago, I was chastised by my fellow commissioners up here, but they realize I'm old, so...
Not a big one. Anyways, I think the first gentleman asked about, are we putting way too many townhomes or homes onto this existing alleyway? The original PRD and today's PRD is exactly the same amount of units that are backing up to this alleyway on that side. Currently, the homes that are out there right now, there's 26 homes that access that alleyway. We were proposing previously and are still proposing today only 34 additional homes along the alleyway, so it's relatively comparable to the amount of homes that are already on that. And again, this alleyway was conceived way back in the day to have dual access from both sides of the alleyway in the original PRD prior to our PRD amendment a year or so ago and with today's PRD on this side. So, our plan did not increase any additional units between the previously approved plan and today's plan on that side, so. And the alleyway is constructed, actually, at or above city standards, if I'm not mistaken, in regards to the alleyway width, I think I haven't measured, can't say what it is myself measurement, measurement-wise, but if I'm not mistaken, it is 20-foot wide of pavement on that side. So, that is a city standard pavement width for an alleyway in, in the city of Murphysboro on that side. So, we're not, you know, we feel that this development, we're not changing the parameters of what was designed originally in regards to the alleyway when it was conceived for the homes that live along it now and the homes that were proposed prior to the last amendment and this amendment on that side. Emergency response times, I, you know, I can't speak to that in regards to that kind of information and data, that's something that would have to come from 911 services in regards to that. The roadways themselves, when they were originally developed back in either the 2000 development plan and installed as Casey Lane it is today, that is, you know, based on the design parameters of the original PRD, it is a, it is a narrower cross-section, but it was designed and approved by the city engineering department and streets department in regards to the original plan on that side. Our street cross-sections in our development will be the, the current street sections in regards to right-of-ways, that'd be a 24-foot wide pavement surface on that, so that's 24 feet, so two 12-foot travel lanes inside development, which is a standard cross-section throughout the city of Murphysboro for a local street section inside the development. So, the Casey Lane corridor itself is a, is a, of course, as we all know, is a median-divided roadway. I think that roadway section, I think is actually a 20-foot pavement section from curb to curb on that side, so you're talking about a very, you know, it seems narrow because of the, the closeness of the actual homes to the street and actually the median itself running down there, so it does have a cozy feeling, and that was the intent, I think, from the original development standpoint, to kind of create a, a very different streetscape presence in regards to bringing the homes up to the street and making traffic feel like it needs to slow down, because that's what, you know, urbanism asks for in regards to new urbanism, is to bring the homes up, make it a more of a streetscape presence to kind of help reduce speed so people aren't moving through there. And again, another consideration in that fact goes back to the original designers, which we were not part of that process at that time. The next gentleman spoke to the, the unit counts in regards to the six additional acres on that side. The original 2000 plan, as I spoke to during my presentation, had 142 units on the original 22 acres. With this additional six acres, we're actually putting in 151 units, so we're talking about a nine-unit increase plus six additional acres of land that goes into this. So, the density numbers are actually less than what the original approved plan was back in 2000 on that side. Plus, the other inclusionary element to this is, the original plan from 2000 had no open space whatsoever planned into it, and we're actually, we're actually planning in for almost seven acres or more of open space in the plan, so we're, we're actually greening up the design versus what the original design was back in 2000 on that side. Mr. Carter's comments in regards to Lockwood Court, I mean, him and I have spoken on the phone before, and we spoke in regards to the adjacent development next door on that side, there is wetlands over there, we were working with them in regards to those wetlands and any flooding type of issues or potential surrounding flooding types of issues coming from the adjacent development that we were involved with on that side, but also, this development, we'll be handling the same, same standardizations that we have to go through in regards to the city engineering and site plan process. I know Mr. Huddleston and his team in the engineering department will be evaluating our calculations and stormwater design parameters that we will bring back with, with a approved site plan process on that side. So, those will be, have to be held to city standards, but also state standards as well in regards to make sure we mitigate any stormwater management issues that, you know, this development might bring about.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Mulchan from the planning commission?
Mr. Mulchan, can I just confirm on the cottages, the front elevations, you know, with the garage side, are those like courtyard entrances?
Yes, ma'am, they're courtyard. This is the type of product you've seen in a couple of different projects across the city, we brought through a couple, like two or three projects that had that, is a garage element that faces either a street or an alleyway section on that side, you, you know, you go in through your garage, but you also have a small enclosed courtyard between, since these are attached units, usually in fours, you've got a little courtyard or alcove, you go back to your front door element on that side. And then what is the back, we call it the faux-front, is more the, the piece that actually gives you the more of the front door presentation kind of element on that side, but it is a court kind of entrance kind of feeling on those.
So, there's no pedestrian-type access to that faux-front side? So there's no pedestrian-type access to that faux-front, so?
Correct. That is, it loo- it's, it looks like a front door, but it's actually more or less a, a glorified back of the house kind of, on that side.
So is staff okay with all the, um, additional traffic that will occur on Case and Lane with this?
I think what staff is okay with is that there are already a hundred and forty-two approved units, so this would be an increase of nine. So I, I don't know that nine additional units would add that much, uh, traffic onto the, onto the public roadway.
Is there any, um, and I know we've dealt with these alleyways before, but, uh, is there any thought process that either from an engineering perspective, that these alleyways need to be any wider, uh, for, for future developments? Or are we okay with the twenty
Mr. Halliburton, Sam Huddleston, Development Services. Um, we believe the alleys are, are adequate for their, uh, for the services and function they provide. They, they are, they're intended to provide really local access, um, to the back of the homes, occasional service delivery. Um, they're, they're not intended to be a street, and so a little bit, uh, more narrow, uh, width on that is certainly acceptable. Doesn't have sidewalk, but, but it is comparable to, uh, to our standard lane widths of eleven feet. Um, when you look at actually the driving surface there for, for low speeds, low volumes, those are, those are more than adequate.
Thank you, Mr. Huddleston.
Mr. Huddleston, is it safe to assume that on a twenty-foot roadway, that there would be no, um, roadside parking along that alleyway?
Yes, and I, the, our, our expectation when we see those is to be no roadside parking. Uh, those are private, so we look to the homeowners and the owners association, uh, to police that and regulate that. And, and really, as part of being a good neighbor living on an alley, uh, is, is, is you have to leave that open and share that with your, with your, with your other alley neighbors. What we, what we have seen, uh, in, in the Three Rivers case, um, as, as that development was slow to build out, we've seen abuse of, of some of the alleys and some of the extra pavement areas out there and some of the undeveloped land around it for boats and trailers and all of that. And, and that's really been a, a symptom of the slowness of the property to develop. Um, as we see those areas build out and you actually pick up that second home on the opposite side of the alley, those types of abuses, uh, should go down. But, but the on-street, our own alley parking, uh, that, that needs to be policed and it needs to be a good neighbor
Thank you. Mr. Mulcham.
Thanks, Sam.
Along, um, the south border down here, the Elden Creek Drive. There's an open space, um, closer to Case and Lane. In that open space, would it be possible to incorporate maybe four or five additional parking spaces? Um, I, I'm looking at the parking spaces that you've got located throughout the property, and, um, it, it just looks like that one particular strip doesn't have service to parking, additional parking spaces other than what's on the lights. And, uh, with that open space being there, it looks like a prime spot for a few spots just for if somebody's got somebody visiting or something to, uh, to, uh, my point is, is, is I've always got a problem with on-street parking, and any opportunity that we get to reduce the amount of on-street parking would be advantageous to us, I think.
Who you referring to on page two, the green space in the, in the upper left-hand corner? That's the old plan there on that side. That's the original plan from the last PRD.
Oh, so you've already done that?
Yes, sir.
I didn't get the new copy. Okay, thank you.
We've incorporated a number of, you know, as you can see in the plan itself, we've incorporated a number of spe- additional parking spaces throughout, so.
So I think my question is for Mr. Bellicandra. Is he still here? Have we, or, you don't have to come up, but have we done any additional, uh, traffic studies that would support one way or the other?
We have not done any additional, uh, traffic.
So you're comfortable with the traffic that, that this place generates?
Yes, uh, like, uh, Mr. Anthony, uh, alluded to earlier, the change, it was already master-planned, uh, with the traffic. The only other change is about additional nine homes.
Okay. Thank you.
There's no other questions, Mr. Chairman. I'd make a motion for approval. Subject to any and all staff comments.
I'm sorry, sir. The public hearing's over. I'm sorry. I cannot, I, I'm sorry. Um, motion is made and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. That concludes the public hearing portion of our agenda. Now, we have two mandatory referrals, first of which is a mandatory referral to consider the abandonment of a sanitary sewer easement along Fortress Boulevard. Matt Taylor is the applicant. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. Um, our next mandatory referral tonight is for a sanitary sewer easement along Fortress Boulevard on the property that, where the Mazda dealership is currently under construction. Mazda has a sign that they would like to put where the easement is currently located, and, uh, they are needing to abandon that sanitary sewer easement. There's no infrastructure in that easement. Our Water Resources Board considered the abandonment at its August twenty-eighth meeting and recommends the approval of the abandonment. And we would recommend that the planning commission also recommend approval of the abandonment of this sanitary sewer easement to the city council as this easement is no longer needed. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
So move.
Sir.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. The next mandatory referral is to consider the abandonment of a sanitary sewer easement along Old Salem Road. Matt Taylor applicant. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. This is another sanitary sewer easement abandonment. This time, it's at the American Geothermal, uh, development along Old Salem Road, just, uh, north of Middle Tennessee Boulevard. American Geothermal is in the process of doing an expansion at their existing facility, um, and they are in need of relocating an existing sanitary sewer easement. The existing sanitary sewer easement is no longer needed at its current location, and according to the Water Resources Department, there is no infrastructure in that easement. And the, uh, Water Resources Board recommended approval also of this easement abandonment at its August twenty-eighth regular meeting. Um, any abandonment of this easement would also have to come with the relocation of the easement in a new easement wherever the, uh, Water Resources Department deems the, the sanitary sewer line appropriate to go on the property. Um, we would recommend that the planning commission, uh, also recommend approval of this easement abandonment.
Okay.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. That concludes the mandatory referral portion of our agenda. Staff reports another business. One item amendments to the twenty-eighteen planning commission calendar. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. Uh, you'll recall several weeks ago, I polled each of you with respect to the November planning commission date, November, the day planning commission date, I should say. Uh, and in your agenda materials, draft calendar, I floated a couple of dates to move the November meeting date. And the reason that we would like to move it is because it is currently proposed the day before Thanksgiving, which I think is the, um, most traveled day of the year. So, uh, we certainly would not want, um, to impact any of your holiday schedules or our staff members who may have holiday plans. In addition, um, there are some logistical issues with advertising the public hearings, uh, with the, uh, for the December meeting with the meeting date as it's currently, uh, set forth. So we would, um, recommend, uh, the amended calendar as you have before you, and that would move the, uh, uh, November twenty-first, uh, one o'clock planning commission meeting to Thursday, November fifteenth. Um, and would, it would also move up the submittal deadline, um, for the November review cycle from November the first to October twenty-fifth. Fortunately, we have an extra week in October where we can basically push everything back a week and still manage to say, stay on, uh, relatively on schedule. So we would recommend this, uh, calendar as amended. We'd recommend that you approve that, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. If you approve it, we'll certainly make sure we distribute it to all of our local engineering, uh, community to make sure that they are apprised of the change.
Okay. Good deal. Make it so. Okay, any other business?
I think we need a, we need a motion to, because, because it was adopted by, by a motion last year.
We'll be glad to do that.
Thank you.
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed. There you go. Happy now. Mr. Anthony.
I do have, um, one other item. I want to introduce you to our, um, newest planner, Austin Cooper, who is, uh, sitting right back there. Um, Austin joined us a couple of weeks ago. He's a recent graduate, um, of the planning program at Indiana University of Pennsylvania. You will have to ask him about that. Um, Austin, he's in very good hands. He's working on the planning team with Diana Tomlin, and so we'll get him in here in front of you pretty soon to scare him to death or hopefully not run him off. But, um, we're very happy to have him. He's very talented, and, um, so far he's doing a great job in our department.
Good. Welcome aboard. Anything else, Mr. Anthony?
We're all good.
No further business. We stand adjourned.